Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, council meeting March 11th, and we will stand for the singing of "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
We're gonna have our own choir before.
I know. This is where we say, um, we miss Phil.
We do.
Yes, we do. Okay, record of attendance, Lindsay, you're good with that? There's no absent with regrets. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? And you can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? So I have two additions, so under 13A, I'll put community plaque. And under 13B, I'll put hospital donation. What else do we have? Additions or deletions, anyone? Good. Okay. Motion for the agenda. Counselor Cleveland. Second by Counselor Daers. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, we're at minute 7A. Town Council, February 11th, 2021, please.
So moved.
Seconded by Counselor McLeod. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the whole, February 25th. Move by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Counselor Daers. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And a special town council on February 25th, please. Counselor Cleveland. Seconded by Counselor Hatfield. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, business arising. So we have 9A. So earlier this evening, we had a public meeting. And we went through this, so now we're at second reading. And this is where we would discuss, um, discuss these issues and vote on them accordingly. So I will read the first motion, 25-27 Clements Avenue. That council approved second reading to amend the land use bylaw to rezone 25, PID 902-17712 and 27, PID 902-17720 Clements Avenue, from a low-density residential R1 zone to a high-density residential R3 zone. And enter into a development agreement for 25 and 27 Clements Avenue for the purpose of permitting a multi-unit residential development of a maximum of 23 dwelling units as recommended in Appendix C of the Planner's Report. And we have everything attached, and there was, um, an addition that Lindsay added, a letter that came in. So, whose light, uh... Just hang on there. I'm on. There you go. I had that. Just for the record, I had that, folks. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Cleveland.
Uh, thank you, your worship. I did want to point out, and you mentioned it a few moments ago, although no one were, was here for the actual presentation, uh, there was a letter that came in advance of it that we, uh, as a council received. And it came from a local business that's in that neighborhood. I won't bother to name the name. But they were pointing out the fact that there's a lot of industry in that particular corner. And there certainly is. There's no question about it. I mean, there's, that's a busy area. There's, there's industrial surrounding that particular piece of land. There's the high school up above it. So that is not a quiet area by any means. Now, it's, it's already a residential area. And it's listed as a residential area. So there is a distinction. What we're doing is not moving it from industrial to residential. We're moving it from low-density to high-density and putting something with, with multiple housing. And of course, as I'm sure everybody knows, we're looking for housing at this point. We certainly are. And so there's a lot of enthusiasm for this. And, uh, I know on the planning committee, and, uh, of course, our Counselor McLeod is the, uh, the, uh, Chair of that committee, and Counselor Daers is on that committee as well. There's a lot of enthusiasm. It's a beautiful presentation that was made for what is being proposed here. But I do have some hesitancy because of what was brought up. And, uh, I kind of agree. There was, there's a fear from, uh, from one of those businesses in the area that you'll get, uh, a big residential establishment there. And all of a sudden, the people who live there will start to complain about the noise and the busyness of it. And for me, it always has to come down to a buyer beware. I will end up supporting this motion. Uh, but it does come down to a buyer beware. We've run into the, I've seen this. Not that we've run into it, but I've seen this a lot. In, in areas in, in heavier, more industrial areas like the HRM, where, you know, you run into situations where they're building residential next to industrial. All of a sudden, the residents is, is hollering that, you know, they need to quiet down or there's a problem here. And in these instances, I really feel that whomever lives there has to be aware of the area that they're moving into. And I guess it's almost noticed that in the future, if this gets built, which I hope it does, and you start getting complaints saying, oh, there's too much traffic or there's, you know, it's too noisy because of what's going on across the road or whatever, that it's, that we can hold on to ourselves and say, you know what? You knew what you were getting into when you moved there. And, uh, so that's, I wanted to address that because I thought that the letter was valid. And at the same time, I believe that we need this residence. And so I'm going to, uh, support this actual motion.
I, I think that letter actually said, you know, no issue with, with the development, but as you said, you know, just to, to make people aware.
Yes.
That was, it was really good. Good, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Daers?
Um, yeah, so I'd like to echo, um, most of what, uh, the counselor said. And just add that, um, I, while I think that the business owner has expressed a valid concern, um, I will note that, uh, the, the business hours, um, do not, they're normal business hours. They're not date, uh, week, late nights or anything like that. So that, that's one issue. Um, but secondly, I think you're right. It's, it's, um, when I moved on Vancouver Street, um, I noted, said earlier, when I moved Vancouver Street, it'd be like me insisting that there be no sirens. Um, you know, I knew that when I moved to Vancouver Street, that there would be sirens going by my house. So you, uh, if you're moving into that neighborhood and it's an industrial neighborhood, you have to expect that. So I will support the motion as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McLeod?
Almost afraid to try my microphone.
It works. Perfect.
Thank you. Um, I also want to echo the words of our, my two fellow counselors. But, your worship, I, the way I operate my meetings here at the PAC, we have both our planner and, and, and the applicant. And, uh, if they have any questions or concerns, is this an opportunity for them to, to come to the microphone and, and, yeah? So, uh, knowing the system as I do and appreciating, uh, what we've gone through and the need for housing, uh, I too am going to support, uh, the, the motion. And, uh, but I just wondered if, I want to make sure that, uh, that the applicant and, and our planner make sure that we're covering all the bases. So, uh, thank you very much, your worship.
Thank you.
Who made the, is the motion made, been made yet? No.
Hasn't?
I don't think we've made the motion. You read it.
No, Lindsay's saying no.
No, so, so moved.
Okay. Second by the Deputy Mayor. Okay, thank you, Counselor. Deputy Mayor?
Um, I actually reached out to some residents that live on, uh, Clements Avenue, and, uh, I received, uh, positive feedback. Um, and from, from there, uh, I guess, uh, concern would only be the traffic, I guess, that may be in the area or whatnot. And especially, you know, when schools going in or, um, they, they didn't seem to say anything about the noise from Terry's or any place around there in itself. So that wasn't really a concern. Um, I know myself, working at the school, we've never really heard much. So, and, uh, I think as the other counselors have said, it's buyer beware. You know, it's heads up. And, um, I'd just like to say, I'm very thankful for the developers to, to be looking into this. And it's great that here we are, you know, a few months past our election, and we're talking about three or four potential housing, big projects for, you know, our area. I think that's a great thing. So I too will be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Hatfield?
Uh, yeah, I too will be supporting the motion. I do want to thank the, uh, business, um, owner who did write the letter because I think it pointed out a lot of value, uh, issues that we probably hadn't considered and hadn't thought about. So I think, you know, his issues were of, uh, of, um, of importance and, uh, that it kind of made us all stop and kind of think about the situation. Um, but at the same time, we do need housing. And again, like the other counselors have said, it is buyer beware. And people have to be aware that there are businesses in the area and that it may be noisy. Um, and I don't think it really matters where you live. In most areas of town, there is some kind of an issue. And you know that when you move in. So, um, I just hope that people will respect, um, the businesses that are there and not be making complaints, et cetera, regu, to, to them because they are there to run a business, not to manage complaints. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, we have, uh, obviously have a quite a need for housing. And I mentioned before the meeting to a few of the counselors that, uh, we have a new lady that just moved in, working at the school board. Um, and she's moved here and taken a job. Uh, she's got a family of four children, and she's in the process of trying to find something to rent, uh, and there's nothing. And everybody I asked, they say the same thing. There's, there's not going to be anything available for her. Um, it's a term job, so she can't really purchase the property until she knows if it's going to become permanent. Uh, and I think in that case, she would be looking at buying. But we're in desperate need of, of, uh, apartments and places to rent. Um, and the fact that the town, I believe, is only seven kilometers. Is that?
I think we're only a couple.
Maybe seven square kilometers, is that? Okay. Somewhere, I think maybe seven square kilometers. Um, if we want to continue to develop the town, there's, we're running out of space. Um, so what, you know, if we decided we didn't want to go forward with this, uh, now it's going to come up again at another council meeting. And it's a, a good piece of land. It is close as well to the high school and ball fields, which are also, um, can be noisy at times, but also offers the residents, um, of these apartments, uh, possible connections with the high school, working with them. And, um, you know, whether it's, you know, greeters at the door, volunteering, and ball fields that they can, uh, play in and have recreation. So I, I'll be supporting the motion as well. And as Counselor Ha, uh, Hatfield said, it is good that the business brought this point out ahead of time. Um, and hopefully the developer can do, you know, whatever it can, you know, to make the residents of that property aware that there will be some noise. Um, but I think anywhere in town that you build is, is going to come with some noise. So that's it.
Good, thank you. And I thought you meant how long and, right? Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Well, just one last observation, and that is that, uh, likely being across the street from a lighted ball field complex would be probably more disruptive than anything that the industry proposes.
Good point. Good. Uh, I agree with what everybody said. I, I will also say that when this came to the table, I was so excited that, um, it was just really exciting because we need housing. Um, we need housing for everybody. We need affordable, but we also need, um, as, as you said, Derek, you know, there are other folks that are looking for, for housing as well. And, um, it's, it's a beautiful spot next to a, next to the trail and everything like that. So, uh, so yeah, really excited about this one. So is there any more discussion? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried unanimously. And 9B. Repeal property tax exemption bylaw, second reading. And the recommended motion there is that council approve second reading and repeal the property tax exemption bylaws recommended by the Director of Finance. And, and the reason for this, and the CAO explained this. We had it earlier, a, a public hearing. Um, we are changing this from a bylaw to a policy because a policy, council can change it, uh, very easily. Um, you know, you just keep an eye on how things are going. And the, thank you, Scott. Good night. Um, keep an eye on how things are going. And if we need to change anything, then we can certainly do that, um, much easier through a policy than a bylaw. Counselor Hatfield?
Um, are we just doing a motion to move?
Yep.
Move this at this time, so I have so moved.
Okay, thank you. Second by Deputy Mayor, is there any discussion on this one? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. New business, curfew bylaw. This is a repeal, and the motion is that council approve first reading to repeal the curfew bylaw as recommended by the Staff Sergeant. Okay, moved by Counselor Lesser? Seconded by Counselor Daers, any discussion? Go ahead there, Counsel.
Information's here, wow. I support it anyway, but I couldn't believe how much they went into to investigate what they should do.
Yeah.
I just, I thought it was interesting. Thank you.
Good, okay. Are you good?
I'm good. Um, yeah, it was, I was actually, I didn't know this bylaw existed until we went to the Police Advisory Board. Um, and for anybody watching, it's a bylaw that, uh, you can see it online, but it's a bylaw that prevents people under the age of 14 from being out, I think, past 11 o'clock at night. Um, to me, the issue's not having the kids out on the street. Uh, it would be more of a parental issue of trying to work with the parents to see that maybe that's not the best place for their kids to be. Um, so I think instead of, instead of issuing tickets to the youth, it'd be better for the police to help them get home and, um, make sure that they're safe. I think the, I think, uh, the bylaw probably came into effect a number of years ago when there was some, um, things happening in town with, um, I guess, a group of young people that were causing quite a bit of trouble downtown. Uh, and I don't, I don't see that anymore. It seems like, you know, people are pretty respectful and, um, there's just, I, I don't see a need for, for the bylaw, and obviously I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Did we make the motion?
We didn't make the motion.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deed transfer tax bylaw. So the recommended motion is that council make no amendments to the deed transfer tax bylaws recommended by the Director of Finance. Moved by Counselor Daers?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Especially this year.
Yes. Seconded by Counselor Lesser. Yeah, you know, it's funny, we thought, um, during COVID that the deed transfer tax would take one of the biggest hits, um, which is, it's, it's true, right? It's, it's why, um, why some of the funding came because we really thought that, you know, sales would plummet and all those pieces. And I guess the real estate market's pretty hot right now. Very, 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 very good. Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this one? Questions called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Counselor McLeod, I love that it's your job to call the question. Good job. Good job. Okay, and officers bylaw, it's a repeal, recommended that council approve first reading to repeal the officers bylaw as recommended by the CAO. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Lesser? Seconded by Deputy Mayor. Any discussion? Did you want to share?
I'll just, I'll just share.
Sure.
The bylaw dates back to 1983, 83, which was before the Municipal Government Act. And council essentially played the role of the CAO. You had a clerk treasurer who, who managed the, the financial affairs, but council had a very direct, uh, role in terms of the, the administration. And so this was a bylaw of the town at that time. It has remained on the books, we just hadn't repealed it. But it is, it is out of date. Uh, some of the positions referenced within the bylaw don't exist. Uh, and, uh, so taking, taking, following the process that we are in reviewing all the bylaws and policies just brings it, brings our attention to it, and it's time to take it off the books.
Absolutely. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Chief Administrative Officer policy, that council adopt the, the Chief Administrative Officer policy as recommended by the CAO. Go ahead.
Sure, I'll, I'll speak to that. So the CAO policy is, is not really necessary. I mean, we've, we've had a CAO in this town for over 20 years, and we've never had a policy. All of the things within this policy that, that, um, you're, as you are, you would be as a council approving as your CAO policy are within the Municipal Government Act, responsibility, responsibilities of the CAO. Some municipalities adopt a policy, and since we were repealing the officers bylaw, I pulled out the model policy and said, why don't we, why don't we adopt it? Uh, it replaces the bylaw that, that, uh, we're in the process of repealing and does certainly, for the, for the public, for the town, we have a document that outlines some of these responsibilities of the CAO. Otherwise, a person would have to go to the Municipal Government Act to see these things. So it's a town government policy that will reside on our website. And if anybody's interested, uh, it's there for their, for their review.
Good, thank you. Go ahead, Deputy.
So basically, just putting the paper what already takes place and is governed by the MGA?
Yes.
Perfect, yep, thank you.
Okay. Did we do the motion, Lindsay? No. Okay. Counselor Lesser? Seconded by Counselor McLeod. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Deputy, if he's going to second those, you're going to have to call the question. Okay, request for decision airport agreement extension. The recommended motion is that council approve a one-year extension of the current intermunicipal agreement for the Yarmouth International Airport Corporation funding. So CO, did you want to speak to that one? Although I, we know what it is, but I don't like it.
Yeah, so in, in, uh, 2005, the, the town and the municipalities of Yarmouth and Argyle, um, took over the airport, took, took ownership of the airport. Signed an intermunicipal agreement and have funded its operation ever since, according to now the third intermu, the third iteration of an intermunicipal agreement. Uh, the original agreement was a 10-year agreement, followed by a four-year agreement, followed by a one-year agreement, and we're proposing here to be followed by another one-year agreement. The agreements have gotten shorter, I would suggest, as the, as the level of...
Patience.
Patience or frustrate, frustration has increased, patience has perhaps decreased. Um, we have finally gotten to a place where if we are going to be successful in rightsizing that airport for the needs and the services that it supports in our community, and we don't have to think back very far, in fact, last week, to think about how important that airport, uh, is in, in certain circumstances in, in this community. And certainly, there's plenty of people in this community who benefited from that airport for life flights. Uh, it does serve an important role, and it, and it's not a role that we appreciate every day. But certainly in certain times in our lives and, you know, with our neighbors and our, our friends, uh, it makes a big difference. So we've tried to keep it operational, but we've perhaps tried to keep too much operational. So we have engaged with Celtic Air. Uh, they're the operator of the Port Hoxbury Airport, which is perhaps the model, uh, small airport in the province.
Sure.
Uh, they're very enthusiastic about, about what they see here with this airport, and they think they can make a big difference for us. So we have just signed on a contract with them for three months to do a, a review consultation, come up with recommendations, and begin to implement for us. Um, as, as a group, we talked about, should we talk about a one-year extension or a six-month extension? And because we budget annually, we kind of agreed, let's do it, let's go for a year because we're going to get, uh, started with Celtic Air. We want to send a proper message that, you know, if, if things go right, that we're there. We're gonna, we're gonna support and carry on. So, um, that's kind of where we are, and we're asking for council's support to, to extend that agreement. No changes of terms, just an extension of one year. And, uh, we'll be back, back at the table next year to review where we are. And hopefully, we're in a, we're in a better spot financially than we have been. I mean, we've made some progress, but we believe there's, there's plenty of progress to be made and still maintain the important services that the airport supports.
So it, it basically said as well that the number we pay will probably be less this year just because of some changes that were, what's, what are, what are our funding percentages? Do you know off the?
Off the top of my head, I think we're, you know, it, we're, we're up around, I think we're 31%. Um, and, uh, I think Argyle might be 30, and the District of Yarmouth would be the balance. Um, 39-ish, so plus or minus 1%. Um, again, I'm going from the top of my head, but that, that's the, the kind of the way the thing is, is structured.
Good. Yeah, Celtic Air's done a really great job in Port Hoxbury. I, I'm going to support the motion because of, of Celtic Air. Like, I'm excited about, I'm excited about that. Yeah, we all are. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, uh, this is actually the most positive thing, I think, that's happened at the airport since Aaronova left. And, uh, and certainly, a one-year extension is, is definitely warranted to allow that to play out.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm seconding.
Seconded by Counselor Cleveland. Go ahead, Counselor McLeod.
The other two units, Jeff, have they signed on? Are they in agreement at this point, or have they had their meetings yet?
I, I would suggest they, uh, Argyle had a meeting Tuesday, and I haven't heard from Alan whether or not they approved it. Uh, it might be in my email, but I, I haven't seen. I did talk to Alan today, but it never came up. Uh, District Yarmouth had committed the whole last night or yesterday. I didn't, I didn't watch to see if it came up on that agenda. I usually hear directly from the CAO if it's approved, and I haven't heard.
Will you get updates, uh, as, as Celtic Air go through the process?
Yeah, so, so I expect as they're doing their work, they'll be meeting with the airport board, and I do attend the board meetings. And if there's, you know, if, if the, the lead on the work wants to meet with the CAOs to go over any aspect of what he's seeing and understanding, then, then, you know, I'm, I'm all in because I think, uh, as, as Counselor Dares said, this is, this is a very positive, uh, step for us to have somebody with that experience and caliber to come in here and, and give us a good review. And they're interested in continuing to do, through the implementation stage. Like, three months is the review, kind of figure out what to do. They're very interested at this point to be involved longer than that. So that gives me hope.
Well, I, like Counselor Dares, I don't, I don't want to lose the airport. And, uh, it's so important to this end of the province, and, uh, it's a connection that we should never, ever lose. We need, as Pam said, we just need to right-size it. Anyway, thank you, your worship. And Jeff.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Hatfield?
Yeah, uh, Jeff, can you just speak to what kind of changes they made in Port Hoxbury? Like, I'm not familiar with that setup, so...
It's, it's, I ha, I haven't been to the airport in Port Hoxbury. Um, I know that, uh, Counselor in Argyle has a personal connection, um, so has, has been able to glean a lot of information. Alan Muse has been, uh, our airport lead as CAOs, and he has, uh, more information on that than I do. But the, the basic gist of, uh, of what I understand about, um, Port Hoxbury is they run a very busy airport. Uh, they benefit from a lot of private aviation coming in for the, uh, you know, the world-class golf courses that are, that are nearby there. Uh, they, they understand where the revenue opportunities are, perhaps, and, and really quickly identify that perhaps on such things as fuel, we may not be doing it right in terms of the best business interests of the airport. Uh, they, um, they see opportunities to promote, uh... of the airport. They, they see opportunities to promote air, air, I guess, private aviation tourism in this area, and they already have connections with parts of that industry. So they feel that they have an opportunity to, to kind of build off of what they're doing in Port Hoxbury and Yarmouth, and, and benefit on, on both ends of the problem. So the municipal investment, that is, that results in Port Hoxbury Airport compared to ours, I, I think I would be, I think I'd be accurate to say that it'd be less than, less than fifteen percent of what we invest on an annual basis. So they're running a very lean operation. We're running a very lean operation compared to the Transport Canada operation that was there twenty-five years ago, but we're still maintaining too much infrastructure for what's going on there. So I think these guys will be able to, to kind of mirror the success they've had in Port Hoxbury. At least, that's what we're, we're all hoping.
Counselor Lesser?
So approving the motion would, that then depends on the other two municipalities also? I, I guess, I just, going forward, if one of them do not, does that mean our cost increases, or this is dependent on all three of them, or three of us?
So this, this is an extension of the existing agreement that lays out the, the financial contributions by a three-way partnership. If one of the other units does not agree to the extension of the current agreement and the one-year aspect, then we're back to the table, trying to figure out what to do. It doesn't mean by default that, that the town is on the hook for anything additional, but we, we have a bit of a situation where, you know, we're rolling into April first, and if we don't have an agreement to fund the airport among the parties that own it, then, you know, and we've just engaged a consultant to do work, you know, I'm not expecting that outcome. I'm, I, I can tell you that counselors around the other tables, and certainly around this table, who've been at this a while, are frustrated, and, and hopefully, as I am, optimistic at this point, that we're, we're at the, maybe a turning point. And, and so I'm hoping that the councils feel that way and, and support the recommendation.
Good. Any more discussion? Anyone? Okay, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Building official appointment, that council appoint Francois Le Grandeur as a building official. C A O? Or, you're going to make that motion? Counselor Lesser, seconded by Deputy Mayor. Go ahead, C A O.
Your Worship just wanted to, to mention, and explain this, I guess. So although the, the C A O under the, under the M G A, you know, hires and fires, I guess, or deals with all matters human resource, there are sections in the M G A, as well as other provincial statutes, that require a council to appoint a person to a position. So a heritage officer is an example, a building inspector is an example. I, I talked to Greg about it. It's, it seems a little contradictory in a way, but there are situations where, for instance, we could be sharing a heritage officer with another municipal unit, and then it would be not, not an employee of, of the town, and still therefore not an employee of the C A O, and therefore, you know, appropriate for council to make that appointment. Same could be for just about any employee, but specific ones are singled out under, under different statutes. So because it's there, we were, we were very fortunate to, to recruit Francois Le Grandeur. He has started in his position. So for council's information, Russell Allen, our bylaw enforcement officer, is retiring, and Francois is taking part of Russell's position, the bylaw enforcement part, and he is also training to become, well, he is our junior building official, if you appoint him as such, and he will be assisting Glenn with building inspection. And so we will have a backup to, and support for Glenn should, you know, we get very, very busy, or if Glenn takes a vacation, or is sick, there's somebody there that can continue the work, which we've never had before.
Yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of stuff.
And Mr. Le Grandeur is, is outstanding gentleman, and I, I only met him after he was hired. Staff looked after that hiring process, but I knew him by reputation. He has a good reputation in the community, and I'm very much looking forward to him becoming a part of our team.
Excellent. Thank you. Counselor Lesser?
Yeah, the privilege of meeting him on Monday, I think at the accessibility, is that Monday? Yeah, he's, he definitely seems like a great guy. I also wanted to point out, I didn't realize that Russell was retiring, so congratulations to him for all of his time that he's put in, and hopefully, he'll have a, a good retirement. But I do think we have a pretty aggressive agenda, and I think this is a good move for us to have him in place.
Yeah, I completely agree. Good way to frame that, too, that we do have an aggressive agenda. We need some, we need some movement, and this is good, good news. Okay, so any more discussion on this one? Question called by Counselor McLeod. You know what? You're the first one to tell me, Counselor. If we can't have fun at the table, then we shouldn't be here. I have to tease you. Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, reports, council advisory committees. Go ahead there, Deputy Mayor.
I'd like to recommend a motion that council directs staff to develop a flag policy.
Okay, moved and seconded. So I, I just wanted to have a little discussion on this, because I know that came through committee of the whole. We did get, I, I shared with each of you, we got a note from Tri-County Regional Center for Education. Joe Bichera sent that in. It's, it's a great letter. I, I think all this happened, you know, the instigation of the, of the, of the flagpole policy, because we, we had some issues. I, I think just before the committee of the whole, I actually had three requests for flags at exactly the same time. This letter, so we did suggest, one of the options was Water Street, right in front of Frost Park, which is a sole and tall flagpole, and certainly, we could use that for the flag request to go up. The letter basically states, you know, and I, I agree, that if the town of Yarmouth is saying, you know, we support flying this flag, then perhaps it needs to be in front of Town Hall, or on our flagpole, or on a flagpole very, very close. So I guess I'm thinking out loud, C A O, if I, if, if, if we can agree and find a way to put those flags up out front, do we need the policy?
I, I think that you would, you would do well to have a policy.
Okay.
And the policy is, I think, the way I'm anticipating we'll, we'll come at this, based on the conversation, is the policy will be to, to, to be able to accept those requests, but also to lay out some rules, because periodically, you're going to have conflicts where someone wants a flag run up the flagpole for a month, and during that month, there may be three other flags that people want.
That's what I have right now.
And, and exactly. So what are the rules can be laid out in a policy, so when we, we say yes, they know what to expect, and, and we can avoid, avoid conflicts.
Okay. Okay. Then, then that's fair, because this is, when we pass this motion, this isn't saying that at the end of the month, I can't put a flag up that front pole out front.
No, we haven't written the policy yet, so.
Yeah. I can still, I can still do that and figure it, figure it out as we go. Okay. All right. That's fair. So the deputy mayor made the motion. Who seconded that?
Counselor McLeod, I believe.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on this one? Questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Go ahead there, deputy.
Recommend that council install a dog park wayfinding signage at two locations. It's recommended by the Director of Planning and Economic Development.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Questions, questions called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy.
That council direct the mayor to talk to the Minister of Health and Wellness to see what mental health supports can be provided in the community.
Moved, seconded by Counselor Lesser. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I guess, I, I think since this has actually come forward as a motion, we've seen more in the news of what's happening in New Brunswick. And unfortunately, it's a situation that we find often, working at the high school over the years, there are a lot of students who are in crisis mode, and I say students, but young people, adults as well, that are in crisis mode, and there's not, the mental support, mental health supports are not always there. And I know on the speech, Speech from the Throne this week, our new premier made that one of his pillars of, his speech was around mental health supports. So I think the timing's right right now, and I don't think there would be many people in town that would say that having additional supports in town aren't needed.
I agree. Okay. And I, and I'll, I mean, it's, it's important to have the discussion. I, I think he already knows we're pretty short-staffed here. Okay? Questions called? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. Deputy Citizen Advisory Committees. Counselor McLeod? Oh, good. Thank you. Okay, mayor's report. I did do a mayor's report, and I think it's, it's, I'll just read it. I think most of us know this, but a lot of folks aren't aware of everything that's going on, because we always post in social media. "As we hit the one-year mark of COVID, I send a heartfelt thank you to our citizens, businesses, organizations for the amazing work we continue to do together to survive this unprecedented time in our history. Together, we've been through much. We've pivoted as well as Michael Jordan, and we are surviving our new reality. It's important we all continue to take proper steps to stay safe, and I believe we're becoming pros at that. One of the steps forward is the vaccination, which begins here with, with those, those eighty years of age or older who were born between January first and April the thirtieth. You can now make an appointment to get your COVID vaccination. You can check out the Yarmouth, townofyarmouth.ca website, and the information on, on how to do that is there, and we'll certainly pass on all information as it becomes available. The past month has been extremely busy. A drive past the ferry terminal will show that we are on the final stretch of Phase One, and we're ahead of schedule, hoping to wrap up this summer, so we're excited about that. The work continues to get the former Y building at 275 Main Street reopened. The Bridge Committee met, and a recommendation was made to the Steering Committee, and we'll talk about that later. There is, there's much more work to be done, both with the bridge and the expansion, but we're on the right path. We also, folks would, would note that we introduced hotspot parking in the town, and while it has resulted in just a little bit of initial confusion, rest assured, it is all positive. Nothing changes regarding parking. There is still two-hour free parking downtown. Instead of marking tires with chalk, our parking officer will scan license plates instead, so it's much more simple. Paper parking permits will be a thing of the past, and they will now be accessible online or using a smartphone app. Folks have asked, you know, what if we don't have a computer or, or smartphone access, and you can still visit Town Hall, where our staff will set you up with the pass? If you have more than one vehicle, this is great, too, because a lot of folks would say, oh, my goodness, I brought, I brought my car instead of my truck, and the pass is in my car, and it's a little bit confusing. So if you have more than one vehicle, you can add the plates for each into your hotspot account, which saves you from switching your paper tags between vehicles. The information, again, is all on our website, thanks to our communications person, and again, it's all positive. Our first-ever Accessibility Committee has been set up and has met twice already. We'll have an update on that. February is Black History Month, and while we couldn't get together as we have in the past, COVID certainly didn't stop us from celebrating. The deputy mayor and I participated in the production of an educational video highlighting prominent African Nova Scotians of Yarmouth. The video is on YouTube, and it has been very well received. Thank you to Minister Rents, our M L A Zach Churchill, the students, and the many others who contributed to the making of this video to celebrate Black History Month. Housing continues to be a top priority for our council. To that end, six hundred and fifty thousand in funding has been awarded to the province to help develop a mixed rental housing complex at the former high school, and that was the town matching the six hundred and fifty thousand that the province invested. This is, as we understand it, unprecedented for a municipal government to get behind housing in this manner, and I would clearly say that it shows this council and previous councils' commitment to more affordable and other housing in the town of Yarmouth. And of course, we aren't taking our foot off the gas anytime soon. There's lots more on the horizon regarding housing, and as you could hear, if you listened to the entire meeting, you heard, you know, the possibility of twenty more, twenty-three more units. The next stage of Main Street, Streetscape Project will begin next month. Can't believe it's almost spring. Gary and Construction will be carrying out the work to complete what we started last fall. Trees, landscaping, seeding, and more will be added. It will take two to three months to complete, so we ask for everyone's patience. At, at times, you know, the sidewalks or the streets could be closed off, but that doesn't mean the businesses are closed. So we still shop local, and we eat in the restaurants, and we support our, our local businesses. That's tremendously important. The Parade Street Sewer Separation Project design and tender packages are nearing completion, and we're hoping for summer construction pending approval by council of the capital plan. And I have to say, where else is digging up sewer pipes exciting, but at the council table. The Haley Road Trail Phase, Phases Two and Three design and tender packages are being prepared for the Parade to Star section and the top of Forest Street. We've submitted a funding application, so if everybody together wants to cross your fingers and your toes so we can get some assistance for this much-needed project, we'd really appreciate that. These are just a very few of the highlights, and, and I can say, everyone at the table, because we were having the discussion before the meeting, you know, there's, there's hundreds of things going on every single week, so it's just great to share some of the highlights. I believe one more highlight, and, and for everybody in this region, perhaps most important this week, is the anonymous donation of the twenty-two million to the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation. I think we all kind of took a step back, because it was, it was breathtaking, to say the least. So from the town of Yarmouth to the donor, whoever you are, a humble and heartfelt thank you. The health of our community is of the utmost importance, and this generous gift is wonderful beyond words. To the Yarmouth Hospital Foundation, I would say this gift is a testament to the great work that you do. Someone entrusted you with this much in funding, so thank you for the work that you do from all of us. And now, let's look forward to, I think, this weekend. Do we spring forward this weekend? We spring forward this weekend, so don't forget to change your clocks. And I can say, spring was here today, and it's officially right around the corner. So we're excited to get lots more work done. So that's the report, and I, I know it's just a small portion of what's getting done, but it's, it's some of the highlights. So questions for committee chairs. I had a couple, and certainly, anybody that wants to ask questions. I was going to ask about the Bridge Committee, and deputy, you were on that. Did you want to share some on that?
Yeah, we met earlier in the week and had a really productive meeting, where we discussed a lot of options. Our C A O provided some great information on the, the options, kind of, to choose for how to move forward. And from that meeting, two motions will be coming to the Steering Committee and then hopefully here. And they were that the Steering Committee of, or sorry, that the Bridge Committee recommends to the Steering Committee that the Mariner Center operate the bridge facility. And the other motion was that the three municipal units make the money that we set aside accessible for their Mariner Center management to develop a business plan and budget. So basically, the first one allows them to start moving forward, and if they need money to consult, the approval should come from us to allow them to access those funds.
So that was a three times seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
Correct? No, it wouldn't be all that, but that was the, that was the pot. Exactly. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for the deputy on that one? Pretty excited to get that.
So I will say, one of the discussions was
So I will say, one of the discussions was, it takes five meetings for this to kind of take place. So it goes to the, our committee, and then it comes to the Steering Committee, and then all three councils have, have to meet to approve it, which could take two to three months. So I don't know what the thoughts are around the table, but I know given COVID and whatnot, the ability to meet online, sometimes we could call special meetings or whatnot. I mean, if it takes three, two or three months to get something back together, I believe anytime we meet and it comes from the Steering Committee that, you know, a quick turnaround needs to be, we could all jump on a Zoom meeting and approve it and, you know, get this going, because I, I know the public's pushing, and, you know, we, we don't want to drag our feet on this, you know? The quicker those doors can open, the better, and if we're the reason why it's not, then I don't see why, you know? We couldn't call a, a quick meeting, and hopefully other councils follow suit, and, you know, we're back and, and up and ready to go. So I'm not sure of the thoughts around the table, but I'd be willing to make a motion that maybe we should meet within, you know, five to seven days of that, and any recommendation that comes from the Steering Committee, we can vote on, and then bam, we're ready to go.
Yep. So I'll, I'm good to call a special meeting the next day.
Yeah, if that's the case.
I, I can do that. I mean, if everybody's available. It's just online, it's, I think it's, like you said, the two motions would come forward, and we'd vote on those, and we'd be good to go. It shouldn't take more than five or 10 minutes, and usually we can find a time that everybody's available, good to go. CIO, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that these particular motions are actually, well, the motion concerning the, the recommended operator is something we've talked about at this table, you know, months ago. So I feel you're, you're, you're right, your worship, that, that having a quick meeting shouldn't result in, in a lot of debate, or a lot of background information need to be gathered for this particular group because of the conversations we've had, and the, the money that we've already approved to move this forward, and, you know, I know this council's very committed to seeing it through, so. But I, I would say that, you know, as, as Mariner Center does the work, assuming it's all, all five meetings occur and, and the approvals happen, they will come back with a business plan and a budget, and, and, you know, we should make sure that when, when that is completed, that we get it to our council maybe ahead of the process, right? If it needs to go through multiple layers of approval, so that you have the time to review it, to think about the questions you have, and, and have a good discussion when that, when that level of detail comes to the table.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and you're right, it's important that we get stuff ahead of time, because that's basically how you prepare. Councilor Lesser?
Deputy Mayor, you're, you're a smart man, and I know we talk about it at this table often about the length of time it takes to get things going, and I think this is a really good, it's a project that we need to get done quick, and people in the community are interested in seeing things move forward faster than we can really produce, but waiting between five meetings to happen, this is a, that's a great idea to have things move. I don't know, was it, was it a motion that you made to do it, or we don't need a motion because?
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we do, because I'll call it the next day. Yeah, yeah, I can call that, I can call that right away. So, so right now where we are is we're waiting for the Steering Committee to be set up, and I know that information from the Bridge Committee went, went through the chair of the, the Steering Committee. I mean, he's, he asked a day or two ago to get that meeting up and running, so we're looking to have that, have that done ASAP. Well, you know, I, God loves you, Jim. No, but you know what? That, that's true. If we were one, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be having these discussions, we'd, it would be open, and we'd be good to go. Okay, so, okay, so that was a good update. So on, on, if we're going to bounce right from that one, let's go to the Mariner Center. Are you okay, Councilwoman, to talk about, because you're chair of the Mariner Center Board?
Sure, I'm happy to. And, and actually, I'd like to kind of acknowledge what the deputy mayor said, because it's very true. There's an, there's an excitement, and with excitement comes a wish to move forward, and it seems like you're getting pulled back because of the fact that there's multiple layers that you kind of have to peel through in order to get anything passed, so there's no question that there's kind of an underlying frustration there. I do have to say that despite the fact that, you know, I'm normally extremely stoic and never show any emotion whatsoever, I'm beside myself with excitement for what's going on right now, because there's, there's a motion, a motion towards something really significant, something really exciting. As far as the Mariner Center Board goes, we've been going through a strategic planning exercise over the last, basically about a month or so. We've had a couple of sessions, three-hour sessions over the last, one was on a Wednesday, and then two weeks later, we did the final one, and that strategic plan will be finished. The final report will be available fairly soon. And it was a very exciting process because everybody was at that table. It was a very honest and frank discussion, and I think, I think it's going to help move everything forward. I'm, I'm very excited about that part of it. I think when I, when I ran originally, I was making videos when we were doing our campaigns, I think a lot of us did, and the one I did, the vision that I had for how things were going to fall in place, it actually did. Like, it kind of amazes me, but it did, because really, to me, the way things should have worked when, when we lost the Y is that if we're going to expand the Mariner Center, then the Mariner Center should be the one who's managing that facility, getting everything in place, getting, getting memberships in place, figuring out what programming looks like. And then you're not caught off guard when an actual expansion happens, right? You, you already have everything in place. All you're doing is changing locations, literally, into a beautiful, you know, a different location, but you are doing that. So having this in place the way that it, that it hopes to fall into place is, is a very exciting thing. Behind the scenes, a lot of work is being done in preparation in the hope that, you know, all those votes fall in place that the way they, they should, following that recommendation, but there is an enormous amount of excitement. There's a lot of, thanks to our, our new CEO at, at the Mariner Center, we've kind of looked at the whole property, and there's, there's a lot that can happen, and we're very excited about that. So that's a pretty exciting thing that's going on. So be looking for the results that the, the public publication, if you will, of the strategic plan, which should be, should be very soon, within the next few weeks. If I may, can I continue on with a couple of other things?
Absolutely.
Wanted to mention a couple of other things, just kind of FYI things as much as anything. But another one of the things that I was kind of pushing for, it, it, there's a frustration, and I was new, of course, you know, four years ago, and you make a list of things you want to have done. Derek, you've been doing a lot of that, too. And a lot of things fell, fall by the wayside because of the fact that you're dealing with day-to-day things, or the next crisis that pops up, or whatever happens to happen. And so I was determined this time through that I'd have a little bit more control on, on those things that maybe were dream projects. And so I'm very excited that I'm currently putting together an Innovation Committee. It's going to be operating outside of the auspices of, of council, but we're going to develop an Innovation Committee. I have a few people on board. I believe actually Derek has been approached by my, my co-founder, if, if, if you will, who's Alan Whitaker. He's a teacher at the high school, and you, you can't talk to him without getting excited just now. He's, he's natural caffeine. And so we're going to pick projects and then do them on, kind of almost on the side, and, and try to move forward on some of the things that we have as dreams, just kind of the, you know, what's on the bucket list? Well, let's pick out a few things. We have a few things picked out. I'm not going to tell you what they are until we get a little further along, but we have some things picked out, so I'm very excited about that. And one final thing, FYI, as I keep talking until you guys fall asleep.
It's almost like you were trained.
Yeah. 55-plus games are happening here, and they're happening in September here. And I'm excited because I'm 55, and I actually get to participate this time. I know that it's COVID, but we're in a situation now where, at least for now, you never know what can happen tomorrow, but we're in a situation now where sports are allowed. It's a good thing. We, we, we won the 55-plus games before COVID reared its ugly head, of course, but we're part of, we're putting that together right now, too. They are happening the 16th through the 18th here in Yarmouth. We're hoping it'll bring in some people, you know? By then, maybe there'll be an Atlantic bubble, you never know. And registration is already online. We're going to start putting together the volunteer crew that's going to be required. We're very excited about that, and if you're looking for more information, I'll, I'll talk about it to death on the radio for the next while anyway, but it's YAS55PlusGames.com. And again, you'll, it'll be fairly easy to find, you can Google it and find it, but there's going to be a lot happening, and it's, it's kind of the first thing that we've had, that we get the, get to host during COVID time, so I'm really excited about that. It's, we're, we're due, and so I thought I'd throw that in there as well. It's YAS55 is numbers, YAS55 plus spelled out, Games.com. Or you could put 55plusgamesyarmouth if you're Googling it, and it'll, you'll be able to find it. And this is, this is a YASTA project. It's myself, it's Neil McKenzie, there's, we're putting together again volunteers, there's going to be, there's everything from five and 10-kilometer races to Scrabble. It's whatever you want to participate in. I still, I've, I've challenged Councilor McLeod for a 10K race, maybe some Scrabble, a game of crib, but it's going to be an awful lot of fun. And you know what? We're to the point where we could use some fun.
You sure could.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. You had a question for?
No, actually, I, I, Wade, you saw my thunder. So I've, I've accepted some time ago, accepted the position of Chairperson of the 55 Games, and we've had two meetings already this week, and another one planned for tomorrow with the CEO of the Mariner Center. We're actually hoping to turn the Anthony Pavilion into pickleball courts, and so, you know, we're, I know in Antigoneish, two years ago, the games were held in Antigoneish, they had over 700 participants. We feel that COVID's at a stage now, of course, everything we've done is, it's been through the lens of COVID-19, so we, we have, it's been a hurry-up-and-wait game, but we feel that by September, a lot of people in this province are going to want to get out of their homes and travel, and so we're really hopeful that it'll be a success. I can tell you that there's some really good people on the committee that are working hard, and I, I think we're going to have a lot of fun, and I'm really looking forward to it. So it's, it's great, and you have to take in the lead role. Yeah, so stick around for September. Hopefully, the hotels will be full, the restaurants will be full, and you'll see a lot of, a lot of people having a good time.
Awesome. We love it. Thank you. Deputy?
So I sat in on a YASTA presentation last night. They presented to all three councils, and it, it was great. YASTA does some great work, so a shout-out to Neil and his crew, because anything they do is always top-notch. And basically what this was, was just a mapping of our area, so they go around with a 3D camera. There's some beautiful pictures of Frost Park and different trails around, restaurants, just kind of any kind of tourist place or whatnot. You don't realize sometimes what's in your own backyard until you kind of jump on there and click around, and they showed kind of the map of Nova Scotia, and our area actually is mapped more than, than most, most other areas around, maybe the city might be a little bit ahead, but that's interesting, because they were saying about, you know, potentially when, you know, COVID passes and we can get some tourism back in here, you're sitting at home in the States planning out where you want to come, and you can click and see some of the beautiful scenic areas that we have here, you know, it's, it's a big draw. And he was saying just the numbers of the hits that, that get on the Frost Park picture and different stuff, and it's amazing. One of the ladies that, that work for YASTA just puts on her backpack and puts that 3D camera on and just goes walking, and it gives you the full 3D, top-down bridges, everything. So I encourage anyone to kind of go on Google Maps and take a look, and, you know, get out and take advantage of our area, but just thank you to the work that YASTA does, and, you know, get, sometimes with COVID, it slows things down, and it seems like those guys have geared up, and they haven't slowed at all. So the work that, you know, Wade and, and others do with YASTA and whatnot, just thank you very much to Neil and the crew, and, you know, check that out online.
Thank you. Councilor McLeod?
I watched the same presentation, and it was outstanding. Actually, Google are using our information that Charles Rover Show and team have developed, so it's, it's outstanding, actually.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Good stuff. Okay, questions for committee chairs? Councilor Dairs is going to ask you about accessibility, if you don't mind sharing for the public maybe a little bit what's going on there?
Well, we have had our second meeting. Of course, we have a, it's not a council-led committee, it's led by the citizens. Really pleased with the quality of the individuals that have volunteered for that committee, and, and every one of them has a, a deep-seated interest in, in seeing the accessibility issues addressed, so under the guidance of Natalie, she's been great, great resource, and we, we think that we have a, we have to submit a report by next April. I think we're on track to do that, and I think you're going to see some really good things happening in accessibility in this community. And I don't know, Derek, you might want to add something?
I was, I was actually just, I actually listened to everything you just said, but I, and echo everything you said, but I was just actually, I was quite excited about what you guys talked about the 55 Games, and just actually making a post-voter right now, so. Yeah, no, I, nothing more to add, if you think you said it all. Really good people on the committee.
Oh my gosh, I wouldn't trade you folks for probably getting anything for you. Okay, what else do I have? Councilor Hatfield, Communities in Bloom, like, is there anything, is there anything there? Because I know you guys were doing those windows. What's next?
Yeah, so this, this winter, we did take on one of the, the windows there, the old Metropolitan or Sands, Sands window. We were approached by Natalie to, to do that and do a kind of a winter theme so that we could change it up. So we did kind of three different months, I guess, and, and changed it up. So that was really fun. We involved, for the Valentine, February window, we involved Life Skills, and we had the, the folks from Life Skills do all our hearts and, and Valentines for us, and then we invited two of the young guys to come up and help us trim that, trim the thing, and they were really excited about that. And then for all the, their friends to be able to walk by and look at all their Valentines hanging in the window was really exciting. And so we've been, we've been looking at other projects that we might do in, within the community. We have purchased, is it 15, Gilmore planters? 10 or 15 more planters? He's not listening.
Gil, do you know how many more planters Communities in Bloom ordered, 10 or 15?
Was it 15 or 10?
I think it was 15.
I think it was 15, too. That's what we'll say. So 15 more of the big black planters that we have presently have on, on Main Street. We have purchased 10 more, 15 more of those, so we're hoping to really pop, pop the, the town. One of the things nationally that they're doing is promoting yellow flowers for, in terms of Hope is Growing, Hope is Growing for 2022 kind of theme. Yellow flowers are not that popular and kind of hard to come by, but we're going to try to tie in, into that in some way, even perhaps even going about and taking pictures of the Forsythia when it comes out, and the daffodils, and we have all our day, day lilies down on the waterfront, and, and maybe trying to get some citizens to take pictures of their yellow flowers, and, and, because I think there'll be some kind of a contest or something. So we're trying to get a feel for all that and see what's going to happen. We've also been given the dory that was down on the waterfront from the Friends of the Yarmouth Light to use, and we're hoping to do something quite spectacular with that, either at the entrance coming into town or at the Mariner Center, under their Mariner Center sign. So we're looking at, just trying to take on some projects that can spruce up the town and make us look better, so when all those tourists come to town, we'll be ready.
Wonderful. Thank you for all that. Councilor Dairs?
I'm definitely moving on. I just wanted to mention that, you done? Recreation, I, one of the things that was reported at the recreation meeting last night, I think everybody will be pleased to hear, is that Tim McKinnon has been chosen as the Town Representative for Provincial Volunteer Awards, and congratulations to Tim, he just does an awesome job, and- And if you haven't, if you haven't seen him out on the road, you probably will every nice day. But further to his collection of debris in the streets. What I didn't know, and it was brought to our attention last night, was that when he does the displays at Christmas and Halloween, any funds that he collects are donated. So he puts them in to help, I think it was, youth mental health. But anyway, it's just, he's an amazing guy, and congratulations, good on him.
Yeah, that's, and I'm thrilled that you announced that because how many of us have been approached by individuals in town saying, you know, he's picking up all this litter, he needs to be, you know, somebody needs to make note of that. So he is the town's Volunteer of the Year, and I'm thrilled.
Actually, I had a conversation with Tim and his residents one day, and he was telling me that he doesn't only pick up garbage, but he's very often picked up $20 bills, $10 bills, and I thought, good on you, man.
That's right. What's important, too, is, I mean, I get approached all the time, you know, the town should pay, the town should, and that's not why volunteers volunteer. They do it because they love their community, they want to make a difference. And, you know, in the past, not with Tim, but in the past, I have said to volunteers, like, you know, what about pay? And it's insulting, you know? They just want to do it for the love of their community, so I'm thrilled. Like, I, and I hope, I don't know with COVID, because we usually go to the city for the weekend, but I think that might not happen this time.
Yeah, I know that Frank had suggested that normally it's held in April, and they're waiting to see what the COVID restriction looked like before that commitment's made.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Hatfield?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Counselor Dares said about Tim McKinnon. He, Communities in Bloom have been attempting every month to look at citizens to recognize and for the good that they do in the town for cleanup and beautification. So we just recently actually sent a letter out to Tim thanking him for the work that he does, and he's often spoken about in our meetings in a very positive manner. So congratulations to him because it is a well-deserved award.
Good. Any more questions for committee chairs? Good, thanks, folks. Oh, sorry, I didn't even see that. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
I don't know if we've had any meetings of the Events Committee, but something to throw out is, we've been stuck in COVID mode for a year today. And I'm looking forward to the party when we're done. And I think Yarmouth needs to be planning something big for when we can start gathering in groups again. And I think people are ready to get out whenever that happens, not before that. So we should start looking at some big celebration in the community, I think.
I'll second that. Any more questions for committee chairs? We're good. Thanks for sharing, everyone. So additions. I had 13A Community Plaque. So this is, this is the community plaque that you haven't seen yet. So this came in the mail, and I'm going to read the letter. It's, and it's written in the four languages. "In the name of Her Majesty the Queen Elizabeth II, Queen of Canada and all Nova Scotians, the Lieutenant Governor of the Province, has presented this tablet in recognition of those who contributed to aiding their fellow citizens during the 2020 pandemic." And so this, and it's got the four little holes, so we can, I have directions, actually, C A O, on how to install that and where. I just have to find them. So this is, this is a letter from Government House, and I will say, I know our Lieutenant Governor and his wife, and they're lovely people. Not only is this tremendously thoughtful and important for communities because every single community has been through so much, and I think of, you know, I was in the city where he basically unveiled this thing and, you know, talked about Port-au-Prince and all those, I mean, we've been through a lot in the past year. So, Your Worship, I am delighted to send the Enclosed Community Spirit Plaque to the town of Yarmouth. As we are all aware, during 2020, this province experienced great turmoil when we were all impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and the series of tragic events that soon followed. As a small province with a tight-knit population, the impact of these events was deeply felt across our region. During this period, I had an opportunity to call numerous municipal and indigenous leaders to speak about how their residents were coping during this difficult time. I remember the day he called. I was greatly impressed to learn how resilient and positive Nova Scotias were in adapting to these significant challenges. The wonderful residents of our province demonstrated their amazing spirit and resourcefulness as they found innovative ways to continue their volunteerism and help those who are less fortunate. In recognition of the tremendous spirit and resilience, I announced the creation of the plaque at the Celebrating Community Spirit and Volunteers Ceremony on the 28th of September 2020. It is hoped that you will display this plaque in your community. My staff have prepared instructions on installation. While we are not yet able to travel to your community to personally present the plaque, my wife, Patsy, and I hope there will be an opportunity to visit the town of Yarmouth in the near future. Sincerely, the Honorable Arthur J. LeBlanc, Lieutenant Governor. So I think that's lovely, and I will do a letter, Lindsay, we will do a letter of thanks for that because it's just really good that, it's important to communities. And B, I had B hospital donation, but I already mentioned that in the Mayor's Report. Additions, Approval of Invoices. Counselor McLeod, second by Counselor Hatfield. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carry. Date of next meeting? April the 8th. Thank you. Okay, so a motion to adjourn. Oh, what? Yeah, well, I have to adjourn before I can go in camera. Don't I? Okay. I do have in camera written down here. Okay, let's not adjourn. Let's have a motion to go in camera.
Soon.
Thank you. Okay.